No other public comment, come forward and state your name for the record.
Mason Bean, St. George. I wasn't going to speak, but then I heard somebody say they wanted to protect our gateway, and now I'm panicking. We have existing zoning already with our C2, C3, and C4. I think the C4 does need certainly some rewriting, but let's not neglect the elephant in the room, and it's that boat basin, and we need to safe harbor. I hope that we can, I don't think we need a moratorium, I hope you're betting there. Thank you.
You have a public comment? Come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is James Donald, and I do own property on the island, and I support the moratorium. Clearly see, since I've been here the last three to four years, a level of trust that goes into making decisions like this, and I'm speaking for myself, by the way, the level of trust that goes in. I really want to be a part of the discussion. I mean, I paid quite a bit for my property. I'm a taxpayer and citizen, and I look forward to y'all voting to support this moratorium.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Tara, and we've owned our place on St. George Island for 19 years. I'm here for, I'm here because I heard that they were considering putting more high-rise buildings in the central business district on the island, and I have two concerns. The first is I've been doing sea turtle work for the last six years, and you folks have helped tremendously with some of the regulations that you've put in place there. We've gone from having just under 200 nests per year on St. George Island to having 450 or more. And St. George Island is the densest nesting area for the threatened loggerhead sea turtle in the whole Gulf Coast of Florida. So it's an extremely important area, and in high-rise buildings on that central business district are going to put light out over the entire section of coastline, and that's going to seriously impact the sea turtles. So that's one issue, that in zoning, I hope you'll consider not allowing more high-rise buildings. The other question I had is, you know, we've been coming down here for 30 years, and I, East Point used to be a really charming little village, and it was so sadly impacted by Dennis, and doesn't seem to have recuperated well. And I'm wondering why some of these commercial interests don't concentrate more in East Point. They would be capturing people who are coming down 98 and traveling west. People from the island will go off the island for dining and shopping, but people coming down 98 aren't necessarily going to go onto the island. So I just wondered if that was an alternative place for development, if we try to keep it minimum on St. George Island. Thank you very much.
Last thing, Miss Sarah, your last name for the record?
Oh, WaH.
Come forward, state your name for the record.
Steven Kirschenbaum.
Hold on, hold on, you gotta come up to the podium, sorry. And you gotta speak into the microphone, which we call.
Steven Kirschenbaum, St. George Island. We had the same problem where I lived up north, and they had a whole different outlook on it, where you have somebody who owns property who wants to build and make money, and then you have a community that wants to keep their rural character. And the way they solved the problem is, they let the developer make the money, and they preserve their rural character by using state and federal money and county money to buy the development rights on the property that they wanted to keep pristine. So he could make money, you could preserve your rural character, and everybody's happy. I know if there's state or federal money available for that, but just pick the green space that you want green space and buy it. Buy the development rights for the property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please come forward. State your name for the record.
My name is Debbie Flowers. I've lived on the island for 32 years. I was born and raised too, in Franklin County, and I support the six-month moratorium. Please consider this for the island and for Franklin County. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, man at the back. If you want to speak, come forward. State your name for the record.
My name's Joel Peerman. I'm a resident of the island. I'm for the moratorium, simply because we have to remember, we are an island. I understand we are the honey hole for income, for money, for Franklin County. I understand that, but it's an island. Anything that comes in there, you have to think of the sewage, the traffic, the power. Everything has to be considered. There's so much, but everybody wants to go there. Everybody wants, there's only so much room. And it's, I think it's to a point, it's getting overwhelming, because every, it's, from what I've seen, people are, they're picking up the pace to want to be over there. And I do think we need to just sit back, see what we've got. We don't want to make it to where it's not the place people want to come anymore. They want to come there because they do have some peace. They do have some quiet. And that's going to be gone if we're not careful. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ma'am, please come forward. State your name for the record. Just to remind the public, this is a public hearing. You are afforded an opportunity to speak, so don't be shy. I know this building's not full for just three people to speak. Take your time, come up and make your comments known. Please state your name for the record.
Martha Hodge, and I am a resident of St. George Island, East End. Built the fourth house on the East End, so I've been there a while. But my real concern is that I really do support the moratorium, but I would ask that when you define the people who will be planning the commercial district, that you definitely include some seasoned, as well as new homeowners, because homeowners may not be business owners and may not have vested interests, but we have, we have vested interests. I counted up. I've paid you almost a million dollars since I've lived here, and I'm delighted, because it's a privilege to live there. But I would say that whatever your committee looks like, be sure that you have people who really are committed to the process, and people who bring the, I guess, attitude of homeowners to that group. It's not strictly a business. Thank you very much.
Real quick, I took this, one of your comments. I don't think the board here has decided if there would be a committee, what kind of committee. I do know there'll be a lot of public hearings running through our plan, his own agency, so you'll be afforded many, many, many opportunities to participate and to make your feelings known, and what you believe the island should look like.
That's assuming I stay above ground in time.
We hope you do. We hope you do. Thank you for your comments. Next, anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Anna Carmichael. Today I represent the St. George Island Business Association, as well as being a business owner on St. George Island and a resident of the county. Speaking for the St. George Island Business Association, we do support the six-month moratorium, and we also ask, if a committee is formed, that we be allowed voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please come forward, sir. State your name for the record.
Hello. My name is John Nicely. We've been in this county since the 70s. I have a beach house on St. George Island. I have property on the plantation, and I own the three lots beside the express lane on the island that's right on the main road there. I, you know, haven't studied any of this issue. The moratorium may be fine, but I wanted to have someone from, and it seems like I'm the only one on this side, that has commercial property that, I'm afraid, I'm nervous about owning this property, paying taxes on it all these years, and having it deemed worthless by everyone else, you know? What happens in six months? And if I do this moratorium six months from now, you know, do you extend it, or? I would just like to have some kind of assurance that my property, I've been paying taxes on forever, is not going to be deemed worthless.
Now, sir, I don't think your property's going to be deemed worthless. This is just a planning tool. At the end of the moratorium, then we will have regulation regarding what you can and can't build, and different other things, but deeming your property worthless, I don't think is, is a correct assumption.
Let's hope, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
George, could you give me a minute? A lady's been standing back there waiting. Give me just a second, you can be next. Come forward, ma'am, and state your name for the record.
Bunny Eisen. I live on St. George Island, and I'm here with some pictures of our island. I've got some friends. Also, I just am here because I want to preserve the integrity of this beautiful island. I'm native from Tennessee, as many of us have moved here from many places because of the beauty of that island. So the signs that say vote no, it's not against the moratorium. We're voting no for an RV park specifically as you enter our island. We have heard there's possibility that might be there. We just think it would not be what we want to see as we come onto that beautiful, beautiful island. We're also voting no to increase the heights of the buildings on the island, and I think she expressed it very well in terms of turtles, but also just in terms of what we see. We don't want to be like every other island or every other place in Florida. Please help us keep our island like it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
About her?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody being here. I think we all share the same interest. We're St. George Island, a beautiful place as you come onto it. So obviously, this affects the property I acquired back in 2012. Just a little history, there's a document in the second half of the coastline that provides a lot of good background information. We purchased that property in order to have an expansion of the Maritime Museum onto the Bay Area Island, where the harbor would be restored. We would have a scouting adventure base. We restarted the Trip 22 scout troop. It was with, with a great deal of effort and expenditure of funds and time that we removed the small undergrowth. We coordinated with the Florida Department of Forestry to do a controlled burn about the same time that a controlled burn was taking place in the plantation, which is a great thing. Does anybody dissent to that idea, that controlled burn is a good thing? It also helped, we removed the fuel load, that a wind-borne flame coming across the island would be, that would be a vector to carry it across Gulf Beach Boulevard. We then went on to remove the dead and deceased trees. We bush hogged the land to make it, give it a nice appearance. We started the removal, we're doing like vessels, that one big sailboat, if that's not the one on the basin, it looks like it, but we haven't had heavy enough equipment to get in there and move that out. I've tried to get a shade tree towing to come over and pull it out, but they're not going to do it. So it's going to have to be busted up and moved out, and we just don't have the equipment to do that at this point. We were planning, we are planning on doing that as part of the dredge preparations that has been approved by this board, this commission. We went through a two- to three-year-long permitting review process with the Department of Environmental Protection. We met all of those standards to create a beautiful basin. I was going to bring those photos with me, but instead, I would urge everyone to, everyone's to get the details on this. Go to the website that we set up. It's listed in the coastline, and you can see the overlays that went into the planning process. That endorsement by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection was enormous. It was a very hard planning session. We met with them probably 12 or 15 times, got a lot of good input. It is essentially renewing the original basin that was there, and the documents that you can view online show the property going all the way back to the early 1950s, and provide a history. Originally, the speaker and the serious were two ferry boats, and I remember the ferry boats. My family's been here quite a while, since the 1840s, and the memories of that time were profound. A little boy of five years old being on a big old ferry boat was something else. And those ferry boats came out of, out of New York Harbor. They were the Staten Island Ferry Boats. That went on, and it connected East Point with St. George Island and Dog Island and Caravelle. And it was a profound era, and then the bridge came along in 1965, and the ferry boats went away. But the harbor was still used, as the aerial photographs demonstrate, by up to 30 or 40 fishing boats. There's photos from the 1975 era. For those of you that have been here since the 70s, you may remember that.
George, could I interrupt you here?
Yes.
Well, we're here for the issue of the moratorium, a lot of history lesson. If I allowed every, if I allowed every property on or in here to give me a history on their property, we'd be here until next week sometime. So please hold your comments, and don't speak to the audience. You're here to address the board. You keep turning around and speaking to the audience. Speak to the board. Speak on the moratorium issue, whether you're for it, whether you're against it, and let's move forward, because we still got another public here after this one.
I appreciate that. Yes, you're welcome. So, moving on to the ordinance as is proposed. And it does have a lot of history, and that is the gateway corridor that we've been looking at, and I think a little bit of history is appropriate, especially to newcomers. So, on the second draft, I read that through, and the comments from the first moratorium hearing had a lot of assurances to David Duncan, the other builders. Let's see, there was Mason Bean, David Duncan, Billy Wagner, Roger Crawford, all of whom were concerned that this moratorium is going to prevent the ability to maintain their commercial properties. There were examples given by Billy Wagner, that his application for development would be shut down for roof repair. Roger Crawford also mentioned roof repairs, I believe. David Duncan was up there just a little while ago. So the assurance we've given, that, I think the wording used by Mr. Scherer was that that was a noticement on his part, and did not intend to impact folks on, and that we had other intended targets. But when reading through the new version, the only exempt properties are R1 and lands owned by the county. So do we still stand that we cannot pull a permit to do a roof repair if it's leaking, or HVAC repair, if it's going to be font?
That's not the way I understand it.
That's, that's the way I read it, and it's hardly, not going to be clarified.
The ordinance out, may I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
To address a specific question, the ordinance that was put on file with the clerk was the original draft of the ordinance, which required to file with the clerk, as you advertised to the public hearing. As we had the first public hearing, there was some public comment, there was actually some discussion between myself and Mr. Theriak in advance of the public hearing, and we noted that there needed to be a provision for people that needed to repair and maintain their existing commercial buildings, and as we discussed here today, if they had replaced a building that was damaged as a result of a natural occurrence such as fire or storm damage, they would be allowed to pull a building permit. So the ordinance, if you should adopt it, would have that provision in its final form.
So if they need to replace their stairs, somebody needs to repair their driveway, all that's allowed, the way I understand it, the way I've been told, the ordinance is drafted. So some of the issues, if your air conditioning blows up, you can't put any air conditioning. No, that's not the case.
If it requires pulling a permit, that would require. Is it, and this, there's not a date on the draft that I pulled from the county website? I was looking at paragraph seven.
May I approach?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there is a new version.
Yes.
And you're going to add about the storm, as we have Irma bearing down to us.
We're aware of that, yes, sir.
Okay. Then the other thing, was there a change, don't it, in the administrative remedy provisions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right. So what comes in matter of administrative remedy? And sites case law, the average person will need an attorney to interpret, nearly defined to precluding compensation for removal and restriction of vested rights of the property owner, I think is what the gentleman.
Is that what, is that what's in the orders? Is that what you're reading?
Yes.
Well, we're here to discuss the moratorium, ordinance governing the moratorium, not all.
That's, that's what I'm meaning, okay.
Yes, the administrative remedy, Mr. Chairman, is part of the proposed moratorium.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we're over three minutes too, so I'm trying to get to the point where the board.
We're now at half a minute, so.
Where other people have opportunities to speak also, and I asked everyone to begin with the public hearing, please try to limit your comments to where the next person will have an opportunity. That's all I'm saying.
Well, there's a lot of facts that need to come out that have impact on property owners, and I don't know if anyone else is doing the same, having to review and research, but this, this administrative remedy is going to be very difficult to access. It's for the short term, six-month period, and if that's not extended, the county is the one that reviews that whether or not an administrative remedy appears is approved or disapproved. If disapproved, 10 days to respond. So if the gentleman owns three lots, it's out of town, or whatever, and unable to respond in that timeframe, it will be considered waived. So that's a, that's a very short timeframe to respond to a denial of an administrative remedy. We learned, there was some conflicts between the 2,100-foot circumference radius and now this map in the Third Street to Third Street, and a lot of ways are, I guess, a little bit confusing. If this is the new area that is to be managed by this moratorium, then that is, that's probably a good clarification.
I tell you what, all butter be start praying according to this here. They giving Franklin County a direct hit at 180 miles an hour.
Yeah.
We talked about the yellow, or we talked about the first thing. I've never seen all this. So we talked about the first slide that he gave of the yellow.
We've not decided yet, ma'am. We're still receiving public comment, and when Mr. George gets through, and we ask for more public comments, I'm sure you can kind of limit it to everybody and not making a 30-minute proposal.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you tried to limit everybody to three minutes, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what he asked, when you asked for three minutes, there's something going on for you. I think you answered them now.
There's a lot of.
They haven't had their opportunity, but could you please get to the point and let someone else?
I'm trying to get to through the points. So the other element is, if there is an impairment of right of use or removal of a property right, there is a reverse condemnation process where there's a lawsuit that's required to address the loss of property rights and the loss of property values, and those will be forthcoming.
Since the moratorium's even in action, we've not even got to that point.
If, if restrictions like that are imposed, which is certainly the purpose of the moratorium, these are going to be more legal costs that pile up with respect to the individuals that have to pursue legal matters, and to the county who's funding the expertise to support its efforts to take those property rights away.
So you voted moratorium, weren't against it, or?
I'm, I'm not in favor of the moratorium. I think that if you're going to do a moratorium, maybe you should consider moratorium for East Point. There's a brief roundup brought up about that corridor, and they come through East Point before they come to the island, and is that, is that corridor, that initial view also so bad that it's going to make somebody turn around? Is the whole court, is the view as you come on the island going to make somebody not come back? Look at what's there today. You know, we've got all this public parking on Bay Shore Avenue, with the business there being Restaurant Bar, and they're not knocking them, and they're saying that's what's there now. There's already a lot of damages and risk to people for that access, and your, your moratorium's not even going to cover that.
That's what the moratorium may go.
Well.
We haven't, we haven't established a moratorium yet.
My thought, my thought is that you would seek to make those kind of improvements.
We might. Who knows? There's other people that want to speak, George, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll cut it off, but I, I just would like to close and say that we've done a lot to try and bring about a harbor there, and that was approved by the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Board, and subsequently delayed, and then declined or denied by the Board of Commissioners. That would have been a beautiful addition, and the only response I had to get any kind of value from the property, as a property right, was to propose this RV park, and I'm hopeful that along this way, that we can get this harbor plan, which was very diligently prepared, back on the table and get it approved.
Are you, are you speaking of the dredging?
The dredging and development of the harbor.
The dredging was not approved?
It is approved.
Okay, well, what are we talking about then?
The rest of the harbor.
The rest of the harbor?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm not going to get into it right now, because we're here to address the moratorium, but I do appreciate your comment. Next, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Paul Poles.
We interested, we're here today, Smokey, because we interested in trying to get an oilster lease.
Okay, it's the wrong time. So we're in the middle of a public hearing, a moratorium on St. George Island. That's not an issue that we're going to talk about right now.
Okay, we're going to be the best.
Public comment at the end of the meeting. Right now, we're in the middle of a public hearing. It has nothing to do with oilster leases.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak about the moratorium? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm looking at some of that public hearing, I think you want to pull a fight here. Business can survive if they don't have people to purchase their items. I will try and be respectful of the time limit, as you've asked before. I'm asking you to go to a time machine with me, five years away, 10 years away, 15 years away, and somebody in Texas, Louisiana, Alabama, Tennessee is asking a neighbor, "Will you go to St. George Island this year?" And he says, "No, we haven't done that for several years." The county commissioner had a chance several years ago, on September 5th, 2017, to put a small step in place to make sure that the island and Franklin County was developed properly. Do they do that? Well, maybe, but you know, now the bays are as clear as it used to be. Some of the best oysters in the world came from that island. The seafood was the best in the world. It was a beautiful place. And now you come on the island, there's RVs, there's high-rise buildings. It's hard to get to Franklin County. It's so much easier to go to Panama City. We can get there much easier now. It's a shame. It's a shame. And there's so many other places in all of Florida that don't look any different. I respectfully ask the commissioners to please do the duty that the people of Franklin County gave to you, and please say yes to the moratorium.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comments. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Jessica Sparks. My husband and I own Patty's Whabber on St. George Island, along with multiple lots in the commercial district. We are 100% supportive of the moratorium. I think that we need to have a little control on what goes on the island and what people that actually live, work, and support the island want, and what we want people to be a part of when they come on the island. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Your hand up in the back. Please come forward, state your name for the record.